Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for February 5th, 2018. Please stand for invocation and pledge allegiance. And Bobby, if you lead us, please.
Father God, on this day, we thank you for all you have done, all you continue to do for us. God, we ask you to continue to help us as a community to come together as one. God, we want to be what you would have us to be, continue to order our steps. Ask you to be with each person here, be with all the persons in the audience, be with all of our leaders, be with our council persons, be with them, watch over them, be with their families. Continue to keep them protected, help them to understand that the job they do for us in this city and for our community is so important, and that we hope, God, that you continue to guide them in the way they need to go. We ask you to continue to bless all of our leaders, bless our mayor, bless our chief police fire department, our first responders, continue to keep them safe. We thank you for their service. God, we ask you always to be with our workers and employees that work for our city. We appreciate everything that they do. Also, God, we ask you this time, please bless our nation, bless our state, bless all of our leaders, help us also, God, as we continue to pray for all of our servicemen that are protecting us in different countries, even in the United States. Watch over them and keep them safe. And God, we just thank you for this day. And we ask it all in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bobby. We'll call, please. Can I do it from here because I'm helping? Councilperson Zastovny.
Here.
Councilperson Yon.
Here.
Councilperson Maples.
Here.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Here.
Councilperson Gill.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Here.
Councilperson Samuel.
Here.
Let the record reflect, eight council members are present. Okay, thank you. Approval of the minutes, let's do the council workshop first for the January 16th, 2018 workshop.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Need a motion for 2018 regular proceedings of January 16th, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Actually, should that not be 18?
What?
We said, we got 17 on here, but it should be 18, so.
Oh, okay.
Put that in the minutes.
Nice catch.
We have the approval of the agenda, and councilperson White texted me earlier, he has under new business number 14, the YMCA capital campaign presentation, they couldn't make it tonight, so he'd asked for them to be moved to the next council meeting. So with that removal of number, well, not really removed, but postponed to our next meeting, I need approval of the agenda, please.
Motion to approve with that change.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Claims to be approved, general.
We have one to take off, which is on page 11. Should not have been included in there. It's for the mayor, for $100 for his, for the building authority meeting. I think he serves under his capacity.
I got your email on the contract. Did you get a copy of the ad for that Indiana grant?
I will get that, yes. I haven't gotten that yet.
All right. And then I would respectfully ask again, either at department head meeting or something, that remind our department heads to get claims in. When I'm still seeing claims from 2016 and 17, that maybe we could make a little, another announcement during department heads.
Will do.
Because we're talking two years of budgets in this year's budget, so. Appreciate that. Other than that, all claims are in order.
The new total is $875,372.96.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the adjusted amount of $875,372.96 in our general claims. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. Parks.
I don't have any changes on parks. It's $197,939.43.
Their claims are in order, so I'll entertain a motion, listen by us and questions.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass the parks claims of $197,939.43. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Report of the clerk.
I'm sorry, I don't have anything at this time.
And we will move right into unfinished business, and at the start of the meeting, Mr. Merkley passed out the new 2017 OR 87 ordinance establishing conditions of the right-of-way activity permit.
Yes, you have revised ordinance also, along with a redlined version showing or indicating where the changes were. The changes that are being recommended come to you from the city engineer's office. They are comfortable with the ordinance as it's presented tonight with the changes.
Again, this is what the intent of not cutting into the street is.
Yes, we believe this will go a long way to hopefully resolving that issue.
I am all in favor of that.
So this did pass on our first and second, so this will be for our third and final.
So we would need a motion and a second to amend, and then come back and...
Make the motion to amend 17 OR 87 to read as presented by the attorney this afternoon.
I'll second.
I got a motion to amend 2017 OR 87 as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Now I will take a motion to pass the amended ordinance, please.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass the amended 2017 OR 87, and third and final reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Merkley. Got Kim Calabro, 2018 OR 4, the ordinance amending and fixing the salaries of point and efficient employees in the city. How are you, Kim?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
As we discussed on the 16th of January, on page three, the base pay and the pay for fire reflects their current collective bargaining agreement and those changes, and the administrative assistant, so that's not changed. The only change from the 16th to today is on page two, the clerk will be changing her chief deputy to chief deputy city clerk, and her ordinance violations clerk will go to administrative assistant slash violation clerk in a pay grade two to a three.
That's supposed to go from a four to a five.
You're correct, yes.
Let me say that a little louder so I didn't...
Yes, I forgot my little note here. It was going to a four to a five. She's going to be in exempt position.
Sure he is.
So I'll make the motion to amend 18 OR 4 to reflect on page two, the chief deputy city clerk going from pay grade four to pay grade five.
Whoop.
Sorry?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, the second, to amend 2018 OR 4 to reflect the change in pay grade from a four to a five. Is there any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. I will entertain a motion to pass the amended.
So we can go ahead and make these changes also, then, and not have to come back next month? Yes, thank you.
Just for the record, councilperson White came in and was present for that last vote.
Did I get the...
I make the motion to approve 2018 OR 4 on the final reading.
Got a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass the amended 2018 OR 4. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Move on to Heather. We have an ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department, 2018 OR 5. Has anything changed?
Nothing's changed. This is for the spring tree planting.
Okay, nothing's changed. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 5 in the third and final reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Okay, we will move on to new business, which, remind, White will be presenting next.
Have two more.
You've got two more. Where? Six and seven. Oh, sorry.
I have a lot tonight.
It all blends together when I remember. So we've got, I'm sorry, Heather, 2018 OR 6, the ordinance of additional appropriation, and we will have the public hearing tonight. Has anything changed?
Nothing's changed. The portions for the Empress and Social Security are on the next ordinance coming later on in the meeting.
Then at this time, we're going to officially open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here which to speak for or against this ordinance? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'm officially closed.
Motion to approve 2018 OR 6 on the third and final. Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 6 in third and final. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Heather, we're up again for additional appropriation. Is there any changes?
No changes.
And I'm going to go ahead and officially open up the public hearing for 2018 OR 7. Does anybody wish to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'm officially closed public hearing.
Motion to approve 18 OR 7.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 7 in third and final. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm going to fix my place again.
Yeah, but that just shows the changes.
That's the redact.
Third and final. Now we will move on to new business. Councilperson Zastovny, you had Beth Kinker, tell us about the birthing center opening.
Yes, I had Beth contacted me. She's proud to be starting a new business here in Jefferson, and asked if she could briefly tell us what she's doing and just kind of introduce herself to the council. So Beth, take it away.
Hi, my name's Beth Barry Quinker, and I'm currently a certified nurse midwife at Woman Care in Jeffersonville. I've been there for 20 years. We've been in, the business has been in practice for about 23 years. We currently do all of our births at Clark Memorial Hospital, and we have decided to open a freestanding birth center, actually just across the street from the hospital, at 1214 Spring Street. And so I just kind of wanted to explain a little bit about where a birth center was, so that you wouldn't see a new business and not understand what was going on there. Birth centers have guidelines and standards, national guidelines and standards, as well as state guidelines and standards, and we'll follow all of those guidelines. And we're in the process of obtaining our ISDH certification on our renovation plans. We've already received our approval through Homeland Security and Fire and Safety, so we'll begin renovation of that building in the next couple of weeks. We plan to open about the middle of July, or 1st of August, right around, you know how renovations go, you never know exactly. So a birth center is a freestanding healthcare facility that takes care of only low-risk pregnant women, does vaginal births, no cesareans, no surgeries of any kind. We have strict criteria for the women that can come there, that can deliver there. We also have privileges at the hospital, so if anyone risks out of our care at the birth center, we'll transfer right across the street to the hospital. We have the support of the hospital. We've presented our project to them, so there's no one opposing our project. We don't expect to pull much revenue from the hospital in our business, because we expect to pull enough people in from out of the direct catchment area of the hospital, that it will also add more clients into the hospital in that way. So we have three certified nurse midwives, we have three physicians also. The physicians will not deliver at the birth center, they will only deliver at the hospital, but they will be our backup for the hospital if we need to transfer to there. So. Anybody have any questions, concerns? No? I have some information, I'm just going to let y'all hand out to y'all, that tells what midwives are, and a little bit about what we do, okay? Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
We are moving on to drainage board appointments. As you all know, I have drainage appointment to make, and so does Ron Ellis, so I'll go, I'm going to point, wish to appoint Bob Rogie to the Jeffersonville Drainage Board.
And I wish to appoint James Wright to the Jeffersonville Drainage Board. James Wright will be replacing Stacy Slaughter, who indicated to me, matter of fact, we talked on the telephone, and he said, Stacy said he was having some personal problems, and that he could not continue to serve on the drainage board, and if I could find someone qualified, he would appreciate it if I would get that person to take his place. So Mr. Wright is a retired electrician, and does a lot of work still on the side, and works quite a bit in his church, so I think he's a fine gentleman to serve on the drainage board.
I'd like to call to order that Mr. Rogie was voted down. Didn't get a positive vote in the last meeting. I'd like some legal guidance on that from our attorney.
Was he technically voted down when it's a four to four?
Yes. So, first thing, first, I guess we've got to start out, what rules you all operate on here. In 1968, the Honorable Richard Vissing, when he was mayor of the city of Jeffersonville, adopted Robert's Rules of Orders as what the operational functional rules would be for the Jeffersonville City Council. And in 2008, a wise, much younger lawyer than he is today, actually wrote ordinance 2008 OR 14 wherein 68 OR 10 and several other resolutions were rescinded, and in section three, Robert's Rules of Orders, "All meetings of the Jeffersonville City Council shall be conducted pursuant to Robert's Rules of Orders insofar as same or applicable." So, and then we had a discussion at the last meeting regarding the exception to the Robert's Rules, which was actually a part of a specific ordinance that was brought up. So, long and short of it is, is we're operating under Robert's Rules of Order. So what we seem to have is a situation where you are asking for reconsideration of a vote that was a negative vote, in the sense that it didn't carry. And something that doesn't carry is considered a failure. So Robert's Rules specifically say that if there is a failure of a matter that's brought to the body, that you cannot ask for it to be reconsidered, other than in that meeting that is being held, or if you're in a convention or a multi-day meeting during the time that that proceeding is going on. And that's just what the rule says. Now, I will tell you that there is a... I keep walking in front of everybody. You think all this fancy stuff will keep you better organized. But in that particular language, in that section interpreting Robert's Rules, it refers to Mason's, Mason being a person who has written a derivative of Robert's Rules that 99 out of, or 77 out of 99 state legislature operate under, which that says a motion to reconsider can be reconsidered at any time. But I mean, problematically, you don't have that as what you've adopted, and even more problematically, it would seem that based on Robert's Rules of Order, that was a motion that was made, it failed for lack of winning, and the tie vote means that it failed, therefore, under Robert's Rules, it cannot be raised, because that meeting was adjourned, and this meeting was reconvened. And I actually met with Mr. Merkley, who cheated, and got out his big old book of Robert's Rules of Order, and looked at him too, to make sure that what I saw and found was correct and accurate. And you got an opinion, Les?
My opinion is that...
You're going to say I'm right or wrong.
I'm trying to figure out what you said.
The motion to re, I think that the issue is only precluded at that meeting. A motion
to reconsider could have been made at the last meeting when it was voted down. My opinion on Robert's Rules of Order, a motion to reconsider would have to be made by the person voted to kill the question. So I think in subsequent meetings, it can be brought up again. I don't think Robert's Rules of Order precludes you ever considering that question ever again. If that's the case, you're going to open yourself up to a can of worms, unless you vote down an ordinance, and then six months down the road, you want to reintroduce that ordinance. We can't do it.
Yeah, we've already done it.
Oh, we've done it multiple times. I mean, and that's what we talked about. I mean, when you look at the Robert's Rules, you have not operated within the Robert's Rules of Order, and it happens regularly. However, when asked...
When you say regularly, what?
Well, you all, you all will have something, and you vote, and it doesn't pass, and then it's, in the subsequent meeting, you will bring it back up in a different form.
A different form, yeah.
Well, but, but a motion to reconsider means that it is, that something has changed.
Yeah, but nothing's...
And I, and I get that part of it, too. But, you know, I mean, from a literal, I mean, so here's the, here's where we're at. From a literal sense, I believe that literally Robert's Rules preclude, and Les and I disagree, preclude specifically revoting essentially, and reconsidering something outside the meeting that was held, and that even in the meeting that is going on, someone who voted in the negative has to be who asked for it to be reconsidered. I mean, and Robert's Rules of Order are confusing, and gives, as Les pointed out when we were talking, there's a lawyer that Mr. Owen wants to come and know and meet and be a part of his organization in Indianapolis in the State House, that's sole job is to provide legal advice about Robert's Rules of Order. So from a practical standpoint, though, on the other side of this, I'm not so sure why, if you are considering amending an ordinance that you're talking about right now, that you're not going to address whether you're going to amend that ordinance before you decide what you're going to do with the board. Because I guess practically speaking, I was asked to provide you all with some options at the last meeting. Am I right about the drainage board? And in the options, one of them is you rescind the drainage board completely. And the other options are you amend and change the ordinance in a manner that addresses how you appoint the board, and there's an option that means that you can be retroactive to January 1st, which means you change everything. So, you know, I was kind of...
Also the option to keep it exactly how it is.
Sure, yeah.
If it's, if it's a will of the council by majority vote to change a procedure, or not follow Robert's Rules of Order to the letter, what does it take? Does it take majority vote of the council?
I think we have to pass another ordinance.
Would you have to suspend the laws?
How can you know the Robert's Rules when it wasn't brought up last? We said that we'll wait till we have, bring it up this meeting, and then they said it's...
Let me just say, I know, you know, I've been on council for a while. I know for a fact, we've voted ordinances and motions, and made motions that didn't carry, and we brought them back in future meetings, exactly the same. I, I mean, I, I don't know, I can't think of one off the top of my head, I was thinking about it, but I know we've done that. It's not been unusual, because the will of the council changes, someone on the council will get more information, or somebody, maybe some people were absent for that meeting or whatever. And I don't understand why that the will of the council on a given subject should be stopped by procedures that the council, I think, creates and decides to operate under.
No question you decide them, because there's ordinances that say that's what the procedure is, and there's ordinances that have amended it.
An ordinance is the law, right?
That is, in my world, in your world, that is the law, until it's changed.
It's been presented tonight that this is the law, and this would be the recommendation to follow.
Mr. Merkley disagrees with me, and what I would do, I mean, I would merely read what makes me...
(Inaudible)
I thought it was 15 years ago, I still have my kids to die on. "A matter that was voted on could be brought back again through the motion to reconsider. Under Robert's Rules of Order newly revised," these are the new ones, "this motion must be made within a limited time after the action of the original motion, either on the same day or in a case of a multi-day session, such as a convention, on the next day within the session in which business is conducted. Until the motion to reconsider is disposed of or lapses, the effect of the original vote is suspended, and no action may be taken to implement it." This is in contrast to the motion to rescind, which is a whole different matter. And then the Robert's Rules, that the footnotes, or what we as lawyers refer to as, you know, the cheat notes, there is a notation to the standard code of parliamentary procedure, and then Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure, which says, states that, Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure states that there are no time limits with the motion to reconsider other than the practical limits of the item being within the reach of the assembly. The rules in these bodies may provide that any member can make the motion to reconsider, not just someone who voted on the prevailing side. So where, Les and I differ is, I think that someone who is on the no side, based on this, would have to bring up the motion to reconsider in the meeting if it was to be reconsidered. And it goes on to say Mason's Manual permits a member to give notice of the motion to reconsider. And then, and then the summary of that talks about the House of Representatives and the state legislatures, and what Ed has said, that you all have consistently done, but, you know, I mean, as a lawyer, I've been asked what the, what the ordinance says.
This has been done since, since we've been on the council?
I mean, I think that you all have brought things back up and for, to reconsider.
Changed, correct?
I can't say yes or no. I don't know if they've been changed or not.
I mean, I would say that most things are tabled.
Well, and I think that that would be, that would be an appropriate way to fulfill that.
I can't remember voting on anything that was voted down and brought back since I've been on the council.
I understand. And so what I'm telling you is, I, I mean, I read you the law, and I mean, we disagree as two lawyers, but I mean, that's what I think the law is. And you all follow Robert's Rules, and I mean, and I don't, you know, once again, I have no skin in the game of how the votes go. I'm just going to tell you what I think the law says.
Can I ask you, did you draft a letter requesting that a president be elected to the...
I informed their council that you...
Wanted it done prior to...
There was a question as to whether they were not following your rules.
And that was not completed either. I don't know what's really going on, why people aren't following our direction.
I don't know whether it is or not.
Who would that responsibility fall on, that I can...
The board itself would be who would be responsible for following your ordinance, which gets me back to the concept of, I mean, so...
I just feel like something else is going on here.
Oh, well, look...
I'm just trying to talk about things that are being requested of, and they're not being conducted. We tell the board, you must elect a president for your next meeting, and they refuse to do it. And then we bring up another candidate that was potentially interested in being president of this said board, when you clearly said that Robert's Rules says that he can't be brought back up. This is my point.
I understand. And I've told you what my, I mean, my opinion, we agree with, that my opinion about Robert's Rules is, is that this can't be reconsidered. And I guess my question to you all is, you know, the Drainage Advisory Board exists because you passed an ordinance. It does not exist because there's any state statute that says that there's such a thing as a Drainage Advisory Board. So the Drainage Advisory Board is a fiction created by the Jeffersonville City Council in 1997, or whenever it was. Am I right, Les? 97? So for 21 years, this board has existed, and it exists solely because you all have created it. And as the creators, you can do anything you want with it by ordinance. So if there's a dissatisfaction with the way things are going, that's one of the reasons why there was a question. I sent you all three different options. One of them was you just do away with it.
Well, just for clarification, they were going to have elections that first night. They had a member of the Drain, which I gave minutes to full council. It was actually Burgess made a motion to wait until, because he knew that there was a four or five that were gonna be reappointed. And then, he said last meeting, draft a letter. Well, they have not had a meeting. They have their first meeting after tomorrow.
They've had a workshop since then, and they could have scheduled a special meeting to elect officers just as we could if we were-
I wouldn't have a workshop, so I don't-
They had two meetings in January.
Regardless, when the council says, "Elect a president," because this is what our ordinance says, it has to be done the first meeting of January, and you have not done it, and we tell you to do it, you can create a special meeting and get that done. But obviously, they didn't, because there was a will of someone not to do it.
And I don't, so sure, here's what I'm gonna tell you. I don't know what's going on in any of the meetings.
Apparently, I don't either.
Because I, so I don't know, I will trust that you all know more about what is going on and with that. I can tell you-
I go to the Drainage Board meetings, and I don't, I understand that he didn't want to reappoint Mr. Rogie for whatever. This has nothing to do with their elections or anything. I've known Mr. Rogie, he's been a veteran on the Drainage Board for 14 years. Case in point, he's been involved in all the new negotiations with the EPA. He's gone to every one of those executive sessions. That is in full swing this year, and I just would hate to lose that experience, that expertise, and that knowledge that he has on what needs to be involved in the SRF loan and all of that. If they don't want him to be Chair of the Board, I don't care who's Chair of the Board, and I don't know why that keeps bringing up. I just brought up about if you don't want my appointment to be Chair of the Board, I'm fine with that.
I don't want your appointment on the Board.
But he's not a bad appointment. Have you ever been to a meeting?
He served as my appointment for two years, and I never heard from him once, and had multiple projects in my district going on. That's a bad appointment.
Did you try calling him?
He's supposed to report to me. He's my appointment.
Okay.
So, should we just move on from that, unless there's a different name?
So, I think I've given everybody kind of my legal opinion. How you guys go forward is gonna be what you all choose to do, I mean, what I think is clear.
You mentioned, and I know it's one of the last things on the agenda, about changing that. If this was tabled right now, and we change it, if it's changed, and then we bring it back up, is that allowable? Does that happen? Is that, will that resolve our problem or not?
Well, Mr. Maples makes a good point. I mean, if you don't change the ordinance as it exists, then you're operating under the ordinance that exists. If you change the ordinance in how the appointment goes, how appointments are made, and you make it retroactive, it's either gonna be prospective or retroactive, and again, I mean, so you all understand, I want to make it extremely clear. I'm just putting everything out there before you look at and decide how you want to do it. It's got nothing to do with what I think should happen. And you can pretty much vote, and if you guys sit here and vote, you can vote. I want it to be, and I hate my own vote.
Yeah, but we need you back there, so we can reconsider.
You know, you're worse than most of the judges I deal with, too, because they say the same thing, and I hate them. So-
We can hear you from there, yours.
Okay, I'm gonna move back.
It is your opinion that we as a council, as a legislative body, and a fiscal body of the city of Jeffersonville, that we should follow the laws that we pass?
The laws that you've passed and the law that you've passed at this point provides that, I believe that that-
Can't be brought up.
Under the Robert's Rules cannot be brought up.
Certainly, I would hope that we wouldn't change a law just because one person didn't get appointed something. I mean, it's been functioning for how, you said 1997?
Uh, the Drain, when you, 1997 is when you all created it, yeah.
11, there was a change in the ordinance, and I, yeah.
Let me ask a question. I was not at the last council meeting. Mr. Ellis, did you make the motion for an appointment last council meeting?
No.
No.
So, if we do, this is different then, because it's two people. Can we confer two people at the same time?
Not different. It's brand new for him, Mr. Ellis, and it's-
I'm just-
So, the way-
Because I'll tell you where I'm, where I think I'm gonna go with this. If this is voted down, and I don't really, I don't know what's going on. I thought the council, or the Drainage Board was working fine, and I thought the appointments was working fine. But I know where I would go with this is, if a majority of the council wants to consider this again, the next, within the next meeting or two, we're gonna make a motion to change the Robert Rules of Order to be able to reconsider an appointment, and then we're just gonna go through that process, and two months from now, we'll have a new appointment. The will of the council is gonna pass, one way or the other. So, I guess that's where I'm going with this. And I think, I think what was a question was the way the original ordinance was written. It seemed to indicate that each council person got to select their own. And so, the intent of that was that you pick your own, but then it also said the full council votes.
Right.
So, it's, that was not well-written, probably.
Could you clarify that when it says the full council votes? I've not been able to get past that in myself. But let me find the old, the old ordinance.
I think we did litigate this point at the last meeting, and you read it to us verbatim, and apparently, we agreed that the council does vote, because there was a vote taken.
Well, we had that discussion after the vote was taken?
Did we?
I think so.
Okay, I may be-
If it was established in 1997, I made this point last meeting, and we're voting on it now, that means they probably voted in it in 1997, which would have been the will of it. Why would we start five years later and start voting? Do you think they stopped, didn't vote the first X amount of years, then one year they said, "We need to start voting"? So, obviously, that would be the will of how it was written, because you wouldn't write that ordinance, start it that year, and some traumatic thing happens 10 years later and you start voting. That would have been the will of the ordinance, because it started that way.
I set it from mine. Mine, I set it from mine.
Les was on the council then.
What was the intent?
What was Ricky?
He voted on it.
What was the intent, Les?
They voted on it.
As you recall.
Go back to mine.
The intent was each council member got an appointment to-
But why'd you guys vote on it?
Because at that point in time, excuse me-
No.
Never- And our mayor was the president of the council at the time. So, we just, it was just basically, because when we set it up, he asked for our appointment names, we gave them to him, and it was just a formality. It wasn't really anything there, it was just a formality.
I don't like the word "formality" when we're, no offense, Ms. Conlon, when we're voting in these types of sessions, I don't find that vote to be a formality.
So, let me-
If you look at the ordinance, there's 3A, 3B, 3 says that Drainage Board is hereby established, and members shall be appointed by the city council, as stated in this order.
Here's the 11.
Well, then you go to 3A, 3A says-
Changed it from a baser board under them to a surer board.
Shall, shall appoint one member each. Then you go to 3B, 3B says these certain districts in large shall appoint one member to Drainage Board. Then you go to 3C, 3C says that any member may remove their appointment and will.
And it doesn't say subject to council?
No.
That's-
I read, I read paragraph 3, where you get to 3A, 3 says that they shall be appointed, the members appointed by the city council pursuant to this ordinance. Well, the ordinance sets out how they're to be appointed, which is A, B-
By each individual council member.
A, B, and also says they can be removed, which you, as a council member, have, under that ordinance, it clearly says you have the right to remove your member.
It says it has to be voted on by the city council, correct?
Pursuant to that, as stated in that ordinance. And that ordinance is saying how they are to be appointed. If you go to 3A and 3B, it says they shall be appointed, each member shall appoint.
That's the old one, that's '97.
No, but look- I guess that the situation is, he had his right. He wasn't happy with his appointment. He made a new appointment, so he has his new appointment. Hopefully, there'll be better communication, and he'll be better served. But I won't, I don't think I'll have that issue. So, that's why I said to have somebody on with experience, especially as-
That's not my issue. The issue is that according to Robert's Rule, he cannot be voted on either. That's the rules.
I'll make a motion to a table.
The appointments? We're gonna talk about this here in-
So, is it in anticipation of changing the makeup of the board?
I don't really know if that would, if that's gonna, I mean, I guess if we dissolve the board, then yes, that'll all-
We're getting nowhere now. We're getting nowhere now, we're just keep spinning. And we're gonna talk about, do we want to keep the word, clarify the wording? We want to do that. We've got three options in front of us, or maybe more, that are on the agenda to talk about. That's the reason I said it, because we're just spinning our wheels.
Well, I've been trying to find an appointment since I was first noticed by last year. For me to have an appointment on the Drain, it's hard, because I'm very passionate about Drainage. There's a lot of expectation that comes with me for Drain, so it's, that's only why I, somebody with experience that's been involved in all the executive sessions, and that's what I thought would be easy for me, but apparently not. So, let's just move on. Let's just move to table.
There's a motion to table.
We said, "Let's move on." We had a motion to table, is what I just said.
There's no second?
Second, yeah.
Get a vote on it.
Question before we vote, are we tabling Drainage Board appointments completely, or are we gonna vote on Mr. Ellis's appointment? They were made together.
And I don't-
There was never was a motion was made.
I don't think that my appointment should be made at this time until we figure out exactly who has the right to appoint a member to the Drainage Board.
Fair enough.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, guys. Okay, so I got a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Thank you all. Let's move on. Let's try to turn this around with Mathan. We got an ordinance establishing the Jefferson Public Arts Commission repeal and replace in private our prior Public Arts Committee resolution.
If you notice, Larry worked this up for me, for us. There's, basically, all it adds is there's two letter Ds. The second letter D replaces the first one, and the last sentence of that says, "Further, all members of the commission shall be citizens and residents of the city of Jeff as defined by the ordinance of law." All this does is says that the people on the Art Commission will be residents of Jeff. That's the only change.
Yeah, and that doesn't affect anybody-
No, it doesn't affect-
Present serving.
Nope.
So, we're just approving the amendment, correct?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to ordinance 2016 OR 86, or-
It's number eight.
Yeah.
So, the amendment is a separate ordinance, amending the original?
No, no, no. We're amending that ordinance, it's just one approved 20, or making a motion to approve 2018 OR 8.
Because that one, this-
So, the amendment has to be a separate ordinance?
No, no, no. This is it. This is the-
Just a bit of a language.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, 2018 OR 8 is-
I'll make a motion for that, all right.
Do I have a second? I got a motion, and I don't know if y'all heard, but seconded by Councilperson Maples to pass, was the first and second? Callie, I'm sorry, I didn't catch, was it first and second?
Yes.
For 2018 OR 8. Any further discussion? Stand none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Wilder and Councilperson Estani, an ordinance mandating the city controller present public information regarding funds paid to vendors, subcontractors, contractors, employees, and other individuals or entities paid by the city of Jeff.
And about 12, 13 years ago, Ryan Grooms and myself put an ordinance together, did the exact same thing. And at that time, the city would start, would publish the top 20 vendors and top 20 employees. And it was really for transparency's sake. Over time, it became a tradition, and even the Evening News, News and Tribune picked up on it, and it became, they asked for that same information from other communities. When I went back to look at, making some changes to it, I noticed it was not in the public record.
And I went through, excuse me, I went through, I could find it in the minutes, but I could never find the ordinance at all.
And what the, just some of the changes were trying to get like utility vendors off, like we don't need to be duped to be our top vendor, or the bank of, or Bank of America because we have a bond with them. So, basically, this is, it will put in the record what we've been doing, which is a little bit more clarification. But with that, with that-
That's absolutely correct. Les and I actually wrote this like many years ago, and he agreed when he read it. He's like, "You did that much before, and we did it together."
I agree with his logic, it's nowhere to be bad. In fact, when you go to that, that year, the look of the ordinance is as it's-
Yeah, I even went through the hard copies of the ordinance, and that one's been pulled.
The only change was, is my future son-in-law found this on my computer about that many years ago. The only change was the time control code. And I changed that language, so.
I guess, so with that, I'd like to put it in, back in the public record and continue with the condition of advertising this information.
Did we make, I think Matt brought this up last time, like an asterisk, or is that gonna be part of the ordinance, like a retiree, when a top 20 person is a retiree and gets a retirement package? Is that gonna be in the ordinance, or is that more of a whoever's publishing it is just gonna, that department will take it upon them to do that?
When you read it, if someone retires and they receive a drop or any of those, or it's like squeaked, but it doesn't look like, I know one year, Mike Smith's salary for the year appeared, and it was like $240,000, but it's because he retired, took his drop, and he gotta go check, and he was quite upset.
Right, and we've had that happen since, and I don't know-
Hopefully, that won't, that's why-
But this language takes care of that.
Yeah, we'll take care of that.
Did you make a motion?
Yeah, what, what number is it?
Nine.
With that, make a motion to pass 2018 OR 9 on the first and second reading.
I'll second.
I just have a few clarification questions, if I may.
Yep, go right ahead.
Okay. On the first page, it says here that the controller, let's see, shall enable the council to publish the information for public review. Do you want the council to publish that, or did you want that to be something that was done in the controller's office?
Yeah, I think it meant the city. The controller would be the proper person.
Okay, so I didn't know, so you leave that the way that it is, or did you want to amend, change that, or? Because it says the council to publish the information.
Second line from the bottom.
Yeah.
I would say, I'd just let the controller do that. I mean, that's on behalf of the council, but yeah.
So, you want to change council to controller to publish the information?
Sure.
Okay.
What does it mean to publish? It's already on Gateway, right? So, what kind of publishing are you talking about?
Right, that was another question. Did you want it published in the newspaper, or published on the website?
You know, when we did this, it really wasn't websites for it. But the idea was to put it in a public domain, so that, and this is all public information, but to make it as easy as possible for the News and Tribune and for any other organizations that might want to track this information, to be able to pull it right away. So, I would say website would be fine, and maybe email to the council, or to even the News and Tribune, the local paper would be-
So, do publish it in the newspaper?
Yes.
Okay, and on the website, and make sure that you all get it, too.
Yes.
Okay. Just clarification on page three for personal service contract. I'm not sure what the difference is between vendor there. Like when we, when we-
I think the distinction there is if there are vendors who have a personal service contract, it fits the distinction of a personal service contract with a lawyer, which you don't have a personal service contract with construction.
So, those you want separated from the vendors?
That was what we wrote way back then, there was-
A separation?
Yeah, there was separation. So, your engineering firms, and your lawyers, and all those people have personal service contracts.
Okay.
And they were one list, and then your health lesson kind of-
But the vendors don't include utilities or-
Correct.
See, I'm not sure who's, looking at the top 20 vendors that I have now, we have some construction companies, we have engineers, Clark County 911, McCowsky Oil, paving, looks like purchase of vehicles, attorney, and some equipment. Attorney and equipment. So that, to me, sounds like it would kind of fall more under the personal services, but, and it's, it's hard to differentiate between the two.
Yeah, in the, in the previous years, it's more and more seems like there's, there've been utility companies and finance companies, and that wasn't the intent. The intent wasn't to say Duke, and, you know, American Gas or Water.
Right.
It was to show who's, who's getting contract work, who's getting, who are our top vendors that we use, not who our utility companies are, who, what banks we do business to.
What we've always done in the past, and I think it is still being done, if you can do, is they publish them.
They get the list from us.
Yeah, we send the list to them.
Because we've, we've always done this.
There's the top 20 employees, and then there's the top 20 vendors, which, by my understanding, always included professional services.
Yes.
But a lot of times, those don't get to the top, because the utility companies and the bonding companies.
But you're specifically saying not to do the utilities?
Right. We don't want those in there.
You never include utilities?
Yeah, we, yeah, we have. And that was part of the issues. I, that's, we didn't want to see those. I don't think most people wanted to see those. That was a kind of a given. Our electric company, and our gas company, and our, you know, and a bonding company, when we have a lot of bonds out there, that, that could take up, you know, five, six spots.
Okay, so taking those out...
I want to make more sense to say we're going to have the top 20 employees, exclude obviously certain things, like retirees. We're going to have the top 20 vendors slash professional services, because we are going to exclude utilities.
But, right, because that's written in the vendor section, and then there's another section in here for personals, personals, what do they call it? Personal service contracts.
I need to be in here just saying, this is going, we're going to...
Or do you want 40?
The less, the less, we'll be calling 40. But we're going to exclude, yes.
Everything but these few things.
Yeah.
Do you want more than 20?
No. We want 20, but we want to exclude some, the utilities and the big companies that, you know, that aren't really a choice, aren't much of a choice.
So I'll have two sections of 20. So that'll be 40.
Be vendors and employees.
No, because you have here, you have section three on page five, which is, no, excuse me. Yes, you have the income earnings is one, the vendor earnings is two, and you have employee businesses, which is three, and then you have four, which is personal services. So this, this ordinance is asking for four sections of 20.
Income earning is distinctly different.
Yes, that...
Vendors are distinctly different with 20 of contracts. And the employee business language was, "Controller shall provide a list of the names of the 20 businesses providing services to the City of Jefferson, who have paid the most money, and which unemployed City of Jefferson has a pecuniary interest in providing those services. This list shall include all businesses that a City of Jefferson employee has revealed in the city's required conflict of interest statement. However, the favored employee to file such a disclosure shall not serve as waiver of the controller's obligation to include a business in this list of the controller's city knows or should know whether an employee has a pecuniary interest in said business."
See, that sentence there, I have, how am I supposed to know if an employee has...
Owns the business that does business with the city.
Owns a business that...
Other than the disclosure for...
Filing, right. And, and looking through there, we have seven for this, for last year.
Well, we don't have a, I mean, that we have.
We have, we have seven that, that have filed for conflict of interest.
This might, in the interest of time, might be a good project for the Finance Committee to sit down with you and talk about, just to make sure that your office is on the same page with what...
Right, I don't, I don't mind.
The will of the council is.
Because we've always done one and two. That's something that we've always done. And where it says, also, on the, the last section, where it's mandated in this ordinance for the, for the controller shall be obligated to provide the information mandated in this order for years 2016 and 17, which those two years were advertised in the newspaper for sections one and two, but three and four are new.
Yeah, I think for, that, I think that was a mistake, and I'm glad you brought that up, because I, I thought I asked you later to take the 16 off, but we still want to do 17, because it was January, so...
Right, yes, that makes sense, yes.
16 should be removed.
He's raising, I mean, he's probably, he's been doing this.
Yes, yes. The sections one and two, three and four are new.
People come up to me and go, I ain't choosing.
Well, yeah, I mean, all, all this information, this public, if somebody takes the time to do it, but there's so many rumors...
It's because you make the big bucks, they know.
What ends up happening is there's so many rumors out there, and people make accusations that are, you know, mostly are, you know, ridiculous. Maybe there's, some of them are true, but that's really was the impetus of putting this together, is just, let's pull it together and say, no.
Yeah, normally...
That company's not making that kind of, that employees are not making that kind of money, and just throw it out there. And it became a tradition, but I just still want, I want the tradition to be out there and continue, but in a way that makes sense.
I completely...
It seems like to me that you're having these multiple lists. It seems like to me, if you, if you want to make sure you capture a certain group that we're trying to capture...
Maybe we need to do more than 20.
Yeah, just do a list of 30 or 40, instead of having all these multiple lists, have them, a list of employees, and a list of vendors, which we've always defined, I mean, when we run a vendor report, a vendor report, that includes everyone.
It's everyone that's got paid, yeah.
That includes anybody who's been paid, that's not in the pool, so...
And traditionally, we've taken out, I mean...
And some of them will be banks that have bonds through the city, utility companies and stuff like that, right?
Right, right.
Yeah. There's specific language in here that says to take out the bonding and the, and the leases and the utilities.
And that's what I looked for, to try and the original copy, say, why are we producing all this other information? And I couldn't find it, and that's why we came back, came back to this.
I agree completely with the principal of this. I'm happy that we're bringing this up again. I understand Heather's dilemma in making sure that you're clear on what the difference between a vendor and a personal service contract is, just so that you can supply the right financial information.
Correct, yes, yes.
So, you know, I, I think that, do we want to just combine those two categories, and then expand the list a little bit?
Make it longer?
So she doesn't have to look at each vendor and say, is this a personal service contract for a vendor? I mean, the simplified...
I'd be fine with that.
So maybe say, you know, we do the top 40 vendors, and then you don't have to differentiate between those two categories?
That would be great for me.
I'd be, I'd be agreeable to that.
So, so there are several changes that I have been taking note of, that I will be happy to make a motion to amend, so...
I have, I have one other.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Yes.
Um, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Under the vendor section, where it says on page four, it speaks specifically about Jeffersonville Parks, Fire, Jeffersonville Redevelopment, and all other entities, boards, and organizations. Wastewater is not mentioned anywhere in here, but it does mention some parts about the control of the budget that the council has. And also, in the title of it, it says, "Under the control of the city." So I'm not sure if you're, I, I don't necessarily separate wastewater from these, so I didn't know if you wanted to add that in there.
Yes, it was to be all inclusive, so yes.
Because I thought they were kind of major.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. And what page was that, Heather?
Three. Under vendor.
Four.
Four.
Sorry, four. Yes, four.
All right.
So in defense of being lawyer, I would say that the wastewater was covered by the "and/or all other entities."
That's true, but you're, you're specifically pulling out some major categories in the, in the city, so that's what I thought was a major category.
Okay. So, so I guess we can just pass this on the first and second, but I want to just go through as a summary to make sure that we make these adjustments for the third and final. So on page one, we are changing, on the second to last line, council to controller for publishing the information. On page four, we are adding, in the middle of the page, under vendor, the wastewater board specifically, so that's pulled out. On page five, we are adjusting, under number two, the number from 20 to 40. And we're combining the verbiage with category four on page six into category two. So vendor will include the existing vendor definition, but also the personal service contract definition.
And we're just, and we're striking the years.
Yeah, and just make sure that it's all inclusive to both of those categories.
And we're striking that 2016 year.
Yes, and then finally, on page six, we are striking 2016 from the middle of the page.
And how do you all feel about the sentence on, in section three on page five? "However, the failure of an employee to file such disclosures shall not serve as a waiver for the controller's obligation to include a business in this list if the controller or city knows or should know." I don't know how that, how I would know or should know.
Yeah, Mr. Wilder, I was one that, that's legalese stuff, so...
That was just lawyer talk. You can say that, "should know," know or should know.
How should I know?
It's like, you know, I want you to walk the imaginary line.
Like, is it obvious?
No, imaginary line.
I think it's, I think it's if you're aware of an employee being part of a business, then you should support that.
So, I guess, when Ed came to me about founding this in recent...
Oh, I thought we were so close.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's okay.
I, I see the concern there. I mean, if there's no disclosure...
Is that legally binding, Heather?
I don't, I don't want to go against the ordinance, which is the law.
Right.
If I should know something and I don't know it.
Right. The employees have to file the disclosures.
Right.
I mean, that's the law. So if they're not doing that, there's a much bigger problem than...
Yes.
This.
And if Heather knows whether or not.
Yes.
Knows or should know about...
So I would say we strike that sentence.
I would feel better about that, but this is your ordinance.
So, from however, to said business, correct?
Yes.
I'll make it, we're gonna strike our failure, shall not serve the waiver.
Okay.
Do we keep moreover, the separation of payments to said employer, and shall include all payments?
Yeah, I think that's still relevant.
That's still good.
Yeah. You like that part of it, yeah.
All right. And now that we're on the same page, I make a motion to approve 2018 OR 9 on the first and second reading.
Well, but hold on, because we had, already had officially on the table, motion of second, first and second, and Heather just jumped up and said clarification.
Then I revoke my motion, and we'll just go with the existing motion, as long as they try to have a change.
I just don't want to make sure we do, we address the motion on the floor.
Great.
Okay, can I say one thing real quick?
And my original motion included...
No, it'll be very, it'll be very quick.
Those details that were just discussed.
And it might be able to help her out, too, because when we get the original contracts, I keep a spreadsheet, too, of all the contracts we have. And one of the things we could do is, I could be in there, in the contract, if it says personal service on the contract, I can make a column that says personal service, and another one that says just contract, and make sure she has copies of those.
Well, I do think that if we go to 40, it probably will...
Include, capture those. Okay, all right.
So your motion was inclusive of the changes discussed?
Absolutely.
And I believe you made the second. Are you seconding that, then?
I second.
Finally got that motion and second, so I'm...
That's been a while.
Further discussion. All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Speaker, you'll give me a new copy, correct?
Oh, of course. I'll email everybody.
Okay, Heather, we have, we do have a public hearing tonight, an ordinance of additional appropriation. And this is the one that is on that executive assistant.
Assistant, yes.
I will open up the public hearing, but I did send out an email. There is requests from Finance and Administration that we would consider waiving the rules and getting this passed on all three. That's why the public hearing is, is tonight, better for...
Yes.
All your records and all of that. So keep that in mind, but I'm, I'm gonna let you go ahead and walk through it, and then I'll open up public hearing.
This is for the executive assistant position that was approved earlier tonight in the salary ordinance. This is the increase in pay due to the also change in pay grade. And it was requested to have public hearing this evening, and all three readings approved.
Okay. So I'm, at this time, I want to go ahead and open up a public hearing. Is there anybody here that wish to speak on this additional appropriation for addition of the, for the executive assistant? Please come forward. Stand none, officially closed public hearing. And then we will see if...
So we have to vote unanimously to suspend the rules, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So I have to make a motion to suspend Robert's rules of order? Is that...
No, it's just...
Nobody in the water.
Technically, you suspend in the rules in anticipation of 2018 OR 10 passing.
On all three.
On all three ratings.
I'll second.
That is, okay, so that is our, our motion and our second. So all those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And now I will take a motion to pass 2018 OR 10 on all three readings.
Make that motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 10 on all three readings. All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we're moving on. We have...
I don't know which one's next. Which one would you like next?
Uh, it's, it has legal services.
Got it, yep.
Department of Law. That will be 11.
Yep, the first two are appropriating the cash that's already in the fund. And then the one for the HR department is for the anti-harassment training.
And I will mention the public hearing for the rest of the additional ordinances on Agenda 20 and 21, 22. Therefore, February 20th, 18 meeting, yes.
Okay. What was 20, 21, and 22?
Oh, that was, it's 2018 OR 11.
Oh, I'm sorry, on the agenda numbers. Yes, got it.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't confuse them, since we just suspended the rules and had public hearing on that one.
Yep.
Motion to approve 18 OR 11 on the first and second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 11 on the first and second. Any further discussion? Stand none. All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now we have an additional appropriation for...
The Social Security and Empress.
Yes.
For the mayor and the clerk that was discussed earlier.
OR 12.
Motion to approve on the first and second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 12 on the first and second. Any further discussion? Stand none. All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We have a going, and this will be 2018 OR 13,
and this is Spring Street.
Yes, this is for the completion of the Spring Street Master Plan, and that is taking 2.6 million from the general fund, and $383,720 out of edit. And then it's also, when we move that over into the Spring Street Master Plan Implementation Fund, it is appropriating it to be actually spent out of there. So it looks doubled, but it's only spent once.
Appropriating the sum...
Yes.
Of the additional dollars.
Yes.
Okay, so first, we've done it all together, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe, if you want to talk about it.
So basically, we looked at, there was some discussion, I guess, about the numbers that came back for the year end in 2017. And it looked like, from the 12-line statement, that the cash reserves had increased over 2016 to $7.8 million in reserve funding of the general fund. So we wanted to throw out the proposal of using some of that money to go ahead and, and fully fund the Spring Street plan that the planning department has put together, so that implementation could take place simultaneously, rather than just in Phase One, which was a Klaisberg phase that the council had supported last year through an additional appropriation. Certainly, Nathan can take it from there, but...
You got it, yeah.
Um...
So just an overview, real quick, to give you kind of the bigger picture here, is that the total project cost is estimated at $4.5 million. Of that, 1.545 has been allotted towards the completion of the project, which includes 100% engineering and design. That is underway. And then 25% construction costs, which will pay for the Klaisberg section, which is roughly from Riddle Street, just south of Eastern, down to 12th. And so, the funding gap is 2.9 and change there, as you see, which takes into account three additional sections. That would be the, what we call the hospital section, which is our anchor institution in downtown, as far as healthcare is concerned, is, and are one of our largest employers. The arts and cultural district, as we call the next section, which is south of 10th, going to Court, which is including the M-Fine property that just got redeveloped, and as well, the arts and cultural district. And then the downtown section, which everyone knows what that is, that's from Court Avenue down to Riverside Drive. So basically, this would help create a linear connection and complete the string of investment, and pulling that through lots of different areas for those last three sections.
Go ahead.
Just a question. So, if this additional funding were approved, what would the timeline be for completion of the project from start to finish?
We have a engineer's estimate that says it'll take 180 days for construction. So, we're talking about basically six months. But there's some, obviously, some work that has to be done in front of that, such as design. So, we have to make sure, you know, we have to go out to bid and things like that, so it'll extend that project timeline a little bit. But I would say, I'd have to re-reference exactly what they have in this report, but probably about a year. Could be slightly more. It just kind of depends on, you know, the bumps in the road as you go along, hopefully you don't stumble into any...
Literally, the bumps of the road?
Yeah, into anything unforeseen, but it happens with construction projects.
And currently, we're slotted to hopefully begin construction on the Claysburg section in September of this year, is that correct?
Yes, so we will be going out to bid in August, and then construction for the Claysburg section will be September through November. It probably will go quicker than that, but that's our allotted timeframe.
Thank you.
If the entire project was contracted, is it foreseeable that the entire project would be done by next May? May of 2019?
I think you said a year, so I would imagine...
Yeah, so I have currently, in my very extensive project timeline here that United has put together, final construction of the entire project is mid-May of 2019.
If we contracted all at once?
Yes. Notice to proceed would begin September, that was, that was based on a September of 17 notice to proceed. So, obviously, we're slightly past that, so again, we may be able to squeeze. Actually, United has been very generous with their time with us. Normally, they get a lot more heads up to do projects, and they don't rush as much. But we've said, can you advance this a little? So, I think there's a way that we can squeeze out a few extra months in there to hit that May 19 target. I think that's possible.
Has the design of this project been completed yet?
No, that's currently underway. Yep.
Nathan, have you taken into consideration the other projects that are already occurring on Spring Street? You have where Clark Memorial is doing their own, they're improving the landscape and the sidewalk and stuff all around their area. And of course, we have the M-Fine where they're doing their own work and improving, and it looks wonderful down there. Plus, we have a new Gateway project that is set to start. I know I met with Orhey, he showed me the plans, that they're gonna do significant amount of improvements around that area, too. Have you taken all those? And then we have the Arts District, which are applying for grants, and so I...
Yeah.
And the cost, have you considered those projects?
Yeah, I do understand your point there, that there's, there's a lot of actors pulling, a lot of investment, and some private organizations that are doing some improvements as well. Martin Paget is here, the CFO of Clark County Hospital. I'll leave him to answer your question about the hospital and its interaction, and how this project is foreseen by them. As far as the 10th Street Gateway Project, I just put together a map really quick, and I'm just gonna pass this around. There are two colors there. One color is green, those are the sidewalks, not road, road infrastructure, because that's a whole nother story, right? The green area is the new sidewalks that are gonna be installed, that are not specific and would not be part of our Spring Street project. The things that are in yellow are what would have been an overlap with our project. So, based on staff, looking at, you know, the linear footage of how much improvement's happening, only about 10 to 12% of the 9th Street Gateway Project is overlapping with what we're doing. I would also say that that project does not include, to my knowledge, any lighting or any of those types of things. It's really just a road project only, with a few sidewalk connections throughout. As far as the Arts and Cultural District is concerned, I actually created the implementation team. So, we have redevelopment, public arts, planning, and engineering that does a twice-a-month conference, where we talk about initiatives within the Arts and Cultural District. And what we find is, we never have enough money to implement all of our ideas in the Arts and Cultural District, which means that we're also always applying for grants and trying to get extra funds to make all those projects happen. And occasionally, we have to scale back some of those projects. So, unfortunately, we have zero funding for any road improvement or sidewalk improvement projects in the Arts and Cultural District. So, there won't be any funding from that. All of the tourism grant has already been spoken for with the Triangle Lot, as well as the Depot. Did I cover all of them? M-Fine, M-Fine, they did, actually, we spoke to M-Fine and asked them if they would push their sidewalk into their property, because one of the design elements that we have in the Spring Street plan is a greater enhancement of the brick strip. And we said, hey, could you allow for that extra room for us, so that we can just come back in and insert that later? They did that for us. Again, they don't have any lighting that's going in with their project, we are doing that. M-Fine is also not improving the crosswalks for high visibility, or restriping the road correctly to make sure that their seniors are safe. So, there's a lot of gaps within Spring Street, that yes, there's things happening on the fringe, but when it comes to the actual road network itself and the safety of it, those are not being taken care of by any of those existing projects. I don't know if Martin wants to say something real quick in regard to the hospital.
Sure, thank you. Martin Paget, 1606 Fox Run Trail, Jeffersonville. So, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Our project with our emergency room renovation, the complete renovation of the emergency room, is about seven to eight million dollars. Will take 18 to 24 months to complete, so we're about, excuse me, we're about four or five months into it. With the cleanup of the outside as well, it fits very nicely with what Nathan has shown me in terms of that Spring Street revitalization. So, we're very much in support of that coinciding with what we're doing, so that when we're all finished, we all have a beautiful Spring Street to go down. But I'll answer any questions.
You already addressed them, thank you.
All right. Is there anything else I missed there with your question, Lisa?
Nope.
Do we have any public comments related to this?
I think there are a few people here.
Did they sign up for agenda nine?
Did you sign up, Lincoln? That was one, Larry.
Remind them, our public hearing next meeting, too.
Yeah, I do want to remind anybody that we are, we do have a public hearing scheduled for our next meeting on February 20th.
You can always have a hearing.
Okay.
Always listening to them.
I don't want people to think they're speaking tonight, that nobody who weren't here can't speak next day.
They had to change the dollar about, what's different?
Fine, I just want to take them in order, I feel that technically, we get to speak in agenda nine if they signed up. So, that way they're just taking a seat. Hey, Larry, will you kindly hand me that?
Yeah, in advance, guys, I'm gonna tell ya, I get to be, I get to be the evil guy that cut the hook, so, you know. No surprise to anybody, I'm comfortable with being the evil guy.
Mr. Ashton, John Ashton. Give Mr. Ashton here 30 minutes.
And please start by stating your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, John Ashton, 929 East Court Avenue, downtown Jeffersonville. I've been reviewing this project quite a bit over the last few weeks and watching it develop. I think this project is key to having a uniform look throughout that Spring Street corridor. Council had mentioned that there's numerous parties that are involved in developing part of that corridor. This is the way that the city can keep control of how that all looks, to keep it the same throughout. Also, I think this is really important for building community within downtown Jeffersonville, to make our neighborhood more walkable, transportation easier, and also to improve overall safety with the lighting and with these bump outs and curbs, talking about, you know, the downtown restaurants, all that street level park, street level, I'm sorry, dining. I think it's a real opportunity for us to improve that, safety-wise, for those clients of our restaurants downtown.
Thank you.
Lincoln Crum. And Lincoln, you don't need his two minutes, he has left.
I don't need it. My name is Lincoln Crum, I live at 813 Mechanic Street here in downtown Jeffersonville, and I'm also a local Realtor. And I drive that path from Riverside all the way down Spring Street to, between Hamburg Pike. It seems 10 times a day, every day. And from someone that lives down here, the fluidity of it is so important, and it's really not right now. And honestly, from, honestly, from the hospital all the way through Claysburg, needs some serious attention. It's time that we give that segment of our community some serious attention with our infrastructure. That's a hot pocket for real estate in the future, for people as owner occupants and people increasing the property prices. That all happens when this type of infrastructure works. So, I'm here to support the, support the measure, thank you.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm just...
That's okay. Thank you, Clayton Pace, Denton Floyd Real Estate, 350 Missouri Avenue. Here, obviously, in favor of such a proponent that you're all drafting. We are getting ready to renovate the Masonic home on Spring Street. We're going to be putting quite an investment in there, and we appreciate all of your all's efforts of what you're getting ready to do with Spring Street. It's been very important to us to know that the community is receptive of such a renovation coming up. And as pointed out from Nathan, some of the gaps that are in there is very important to us as well, because we're getting ready to do quite an extensive reuse, and we're really looking forward to it. And if you have any questions for us, for me right now, be happy to address those.
What do you anticipate your estimated investment in just the Masonic home? I know Denton Floyd has several projects ongoing, but just in the Masonic home?
Yes, sir, about three and a half million dollars.
Thank you for making Jeffersonville your office.
We are really looking forward to it. I'm from Jeffersonville. I've grown up here and been here my entire life. I live out in Steeplechase. And so, I'm really looking forward. I'm their Director of Construction Development. And right now, we're over at Missouri, which is the Water Tower Square. And we're ready to bring our development and construction offices into that facility and make it our focal point and showcase.
Technically, are you on the Clarksville side of the line over there?
We use Jeffersonville as our address.
But I want to consider you as a relocated headquarters.
We're relocating all of the development and construction into the Masonic address.
You realize there's a ripple at the town border?
And that is why I said we have a Jeffersonville address. We're right there at that border.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scher.
Warren Shimp, Shimp's Confectionery downtown Jeffersonville, 347 Spring Street. Basically, what I want to say here is, I'm very supportive of the whole improvement project for downtown. I just have a couple cautions that I'd like to point out that hopefully have been considered. We're really concerned over the bump outs that are put in downtown for restaurants. You know, it's a precedent. I think, you know, sitting in the street, when we go to Red Yeti, we like to sit there, it's a great ambience. I am just concerned over making permanent bump outs for the restaurants, and I understand the need for them, safety and so on. I just think we should be cautious if we provide them for the restaurants that are here. What happens when they go? What happens when it's another restaurant, two doors down, we make another one, then we've lost our parking downtown. I just want caution that maybe, you know, we can consider what to do with those bump outs and how to maybe make them temporary, permanent. There ought to be some good solution that way. Number two, the one thing I'm concerned, one of the things I'm concerned over is the drainage underneath those bump outs in front of the 300 block, especially in front of our place. The drainage under the bump out, if we put one next to us, anyway. O'Shea's, it's gonna be an impediment to the drainage which comes, all of Spring Street comes there. When they have the chairs in the street, the chairs take leaves, they build up, and that we make sure that we have good drainage under these bump outs for the water that's in there. And I don't know whether that's taken into consideration. That's one thing we're terribly concerned over, and when we see water halfway to the middle of the street, because it gets caught in the chairs and stuff that's there, I just want to be sure that, you know, we don't get flooded. If we make permanent bump outs, that there's a proper drainage underneath those bump outs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scher.
Thank you.
That would be all the public comments.
I know I spoke with a few other business owners that are downtown that weren't able to be here tonight, as well as representative from the Builders Association for Southern Indiana, Builders and Developers Association for Southern Indiana, and their CEO did provide a letter for us to enter into the record, a letter of support. And I'm gonna pass that around, yes.
Sorry, I don't have...
Do you have a copy of the letter?
Pardon me, sir? No.
Just ask, we enter that into the record, and we can read it if we want to, or if you just want to pass it around, that's fine. But that's, that is a letter of support from their organization. Basically, this project, in summary, he says this project, you know, is in accordance with, basically, all of the points that their organization tries to strive for when they push for development that is, what was his words, he said it much more eloquently than I am, managed growth, smart growth and land use policy. And he outlines those five bullet points of what they take into consideration, and agrees that this, you know, adheres to all of those five points. There was also another business owner that is a restaurateur downtown. He mentioned that, you know, he was, they had been here for a little while, and he wanted to make sure that we weren't going to stop investing in downtown, because he wants to see the growth continue with more activity down there. We asked for, for some funding at the end of last year, and the council made an appropriation for Phase 1. The UEZ put in some money to help us get the design phase complete throughout. This is just coming up now. I know nobody, I don't think anybody really expected to see this come out so quickly after the first of the year. But because that 12-line statement, you know, came back for year end and said, hey, there's 7.8 million dollars left in the general fund, our reserves are sitting at 24.5%, when our target level is 15%. There's plenty, plenty of money to do this, if this is gonna be our priority. This has been something that I've wanted to push for a long time. Mr. White has done his best to push for it since he's come into office as well. I'm fairly certain the administration is supportive, and it sounds like we have a lot of community support. I don't know if you were able to speak to anybody from Main Street, I didn't get in touch with him.
Mr. Ellis is in support of it as well, and has been, yeah, from the beginning.
So, like I said, it wasn't something that we anticipated bringing back right away, but having those cash reserves hit that 24.5% mark, it's an opportunity to knock it out, save some money on some contingencies and some construction costs versus putting it up, pulling out into phases. And so, that's why we thought we'd go ahead and present it to you, and at least make the ask.
Downtown Merchants Association as well is in support. The president had another obligation, and the vice president's in another meeting, so...
What, Heather, do you know what our expected surplus funds were gonna be from the general fund, and like...
It's on the new sheet I just gave you tonight.
What were the projected?
The projected, like the difference between what we thought they would be last year? I know I have the January one.
I don't have that with me right now.
Just curious what...
I know that the cash reserves increased by 800,000 from last, from, yes, from the beginning of 2017 to the end of 2017.
And that was after the additional appropriation for Phase 1 and the design work and...
Yes.
Couple of other things.
Yes, due to increase in our miscellaneous revenues and lower circuit breaker impact and not spending all of the budget.
And I mentioned that our, our cash reserve sits at 24.5%. If you look at that reserve over our actual property tax levy line, which is line one on the 12-line statement, we're really closer to 36%. We have healthy reserves... We have healthy reserves. We've spent this amount of money on capital projects in the past. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve 2018 OR 13 and open it up for any other discussion.
On the first reading or second?
On the first and second.
Second?
I got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 13 on the first and second reading. Is there any further discussion?
Heather, the Spring Street non-reverting fund.
Yes.
When the funds go into that account, it can only be used for that account. Is that accurate?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So it wouldn't be able to be used by the administration for other projects?
No. You've established that fund by ordinance, and it can only be used for that purpose.
Okay.
There any other discussion?
Is there any discussion from...
I'm just going to come around, I think, because I've been, but I can only speak for myself, but I don't think there is a council person up here that doesn't support or agree with this project and want to see this project done. It's just not a priority for me to do all this right now when I have some other priorities that are on my list, so that's the number. It will be, I support it in phases, because it gives us a little bit more control as we go. And what, because like, once the money's there, something's added or taken away, well, I won't really know about that. Well, maybe I might know about that, but I've stated before, we did this, we brought this up when we discussed the bond, and then when we implemented the money for Phase One, I brought it up then. I totally support the project. I must see it done. I don't want to see any laps between the phases. I want to see it completed, done. It's just, want to kind of pay as we go. I just wanted to put that out there.
Well, and I'll add that when we decided this just a couple months ago, on how we were going to pursue this, $800,000 more does not change my mind when the ask is over $3 million, when we have, just off the top of my head, some very big unknown expenditures coming down the street at us. I think redevelopment should be involved in this project, which I'll be more than happy to bring that up and fight for it on redevelopment. And I think other entities that are downtown should be putting some of the bill for this. I thought I was doing a pretty good job of offering up the 1.4 million out of reserves to get the project started and to get it underway. So I'll be, I will not be vogueing to approve all of the money at one time, although potentially in the future, more money could be appropriated. At this time, with these other expenditures coming, I'll be vogueing.
Would there be any will to add maybe the hospital and arts and cultural district only and not the downtown version?
I'm happy with the deal that was struck two months ago.
How about Ms. Gill?
Um...
Could you be open for that?
But I'm just, one person. You need five.
I'm sticking by what I stated then.
Well, I'm just saying that would still do it in phases, but we could just add another segment to the first phase. Could you be open for that?
I would be curious as to what the other priorities are that are ahead of this one that have design underway, that are shovel, potentially shovel-ready within the next couple of months.
Well, I didn't know we were putting together a list of things that we were going to have in the next couple of months. To me, I made a vote a couple of months ago. Nothing has changed between that vote and this vote. I'm not a...
Okay, so there's no...
Would you, would there be any compromise on maybe just doing the hospital portion in the arts and cultural district, or is there no discussion on that? It seems we want to do it in phases, so maybe if we just add the hospital portion to it?
What are those breakdowns?
Let's see, I don't know.
If they're headed in the...
For the hospital segment, it's 791,700, 700, I'm sorry, 791,794 for the arts and cultural district. It's 1,134,369. So that would reduce the appropriation from 2.9 million to 1.9 million. Or if we just did the hospital version, it would just increase to 791,000. Increase it 791,794. That would make some additional significant increase in the gap that we have.
I'll take all that under consideration.
Call the question.
Would you be interested in tabling it until the next meeting and think about that?
You can always lower the amount at the next meeting, too. Or not approve it at all.
So is a call to question on the motion to pass? Yes, we have a motion and a second to pass on the first and second reading.
Well, I can rescind the motion, and we can continue to discuss. If you want to table it, we can table it, but...
Oh, we rescind the second.
There's been a first and a second, and call the question for a vote. And I rescinded the motion.
I rescind my second. Why are you looking at Robert Freu's?
Hand over, because they didn't require math, and they didn't require Robert Freu's laws of law. I said, no, you leave it. Let's not confuse ourselves twice already.
You're just earning your pay this meeting. It's okay.
So a motion was made to pass as presented, correct?
Yep.
And then there was a discussion.
Yes.
There's also a second, correct?
There was a first, a second, and then discussion.
And then discussion.
And a call to question. And then call for the question.
Rescind the motion.
You rescinded the motion, which he has the right to rescind, it's a motion. So you have the right to rescind your motion.
And then does he have to rescind a second?
The second concurs, or is the second concurred? So we have no, we have, we have a big book and no motion.
I'll just, I just, I'll just add that, according to Nathan Pruitt and his project timeline, that the Clayesburg portion should take about three months to complete. Is that correct, Nathan? Is that what I remember you said, three months for that first phase?
It's our construction window. We're allowing ourselves to three months, but we think we could complete the whole thing in 180 days.
The whole thing, yeah. So if the will is to do the phases seamlessly, as Councilwoman Gill said, then we would need to be revisiting this within the next three months anyway, correct? In order to have seamless construction, and possibly earlier, because it might not be three months for the first portion.
It would be best to bid in August for an additional segment if there was funding coming for it, rather than doing a second bid, because then you could have potentially two different construction firms building two different segments, so...
Right.
Yeah. So if there is will, then it'd probably be best to revisit again sooner rather than later for another segment.
In, I'll tell you, in an effort not to move this to a table and to move it for a future vote, I'm going to make a motion to pass it. I'll be voting against it, but just so we can get a vote and move on. So I'll make a motion to go ahead and pass this ordinance.
On what ratings?
Pardon me?
You made a motion to pass on...
The first and second.
Okay.
And hopes that there'll be a second, and then we can make a vote.
Okay. Do I have a second to his, Ed's motion?
I'll second.
They got a motion, a second to pass 2018 OR 13 on the first and second reading.
I'd like a roll call, please.
Oh, I'm ready. I'm ready. Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Zostovny.
No.
Councilperson Yon.
Aye.
Councilperson Maples.
Yes.
Councilperson Hawkins.
No.
Councilperson Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Samuel.
No.
Councilperson Ellis.
No.
Council President Gill.
No.
Failed. It was, so you'll know it was five to four. All righty.
We appreciate everybody that came out to offer support.
Yes, thank you very much.
We have Larry Wilder, the Discussion on Drainage Board Ordinance.
Oh, how interesting this is.
Oh, now the next fun one comes up. All right.
All right, so, Mr. Merkley and I have spent time over here looking through Robert's Rules of Order, and you guys will have to continue when you, you're living exciting life like us. So where we are, before we, before we start talking about this ordinance, there, now, there's, there is a partial belief that there can be a motion to renew the motion that failed through Robert's Rules of Order. But the motion to renew, we think, based on the Little Red Book and the Internet, must be made by someone who was on the prevailing side of the previous motion.
So someone who voted no.
Someone who voted no can make a motion to renew.
And that's not going to happen.
But I just want to give you full disclosure.
What about somebody who was not present and didn't cast a vote?
Is there an amendment for that? Is that 3A2?
I thought we were talking about...
So with all of this, I actually served on board for many years, on the higher level of the power, to answer the very question you were trying to ask.
No way.
What was his answer? Did you, did you get an answer?
Basically, the answer's right in the middle. And when you make a motion, if the prevailing, if the motion is put down, the persons that can bring it back are the people who are on the prevailing side. But that, and that is done so that the losing side can't bring it back from week to week to week. But that restriction does not go on forever. It only goes on for the session of the Board of the Council. In other words, you operate from year to year.
Okay.
So after that year is up, then we can bring it back.
I got it.
So that was kind of where Les and I came to that. With that said, there was another way, and go with what was pointed out. So if you all existed in quarters, and every quarter, at the end of the quarter, it could be raised. So with all that said, this is kind of some craziness and...
A question, Larry.
Yes.
Since the vote was four for and four against, did we have a prevailing side?
Yes.
Yes. If you don't achieve a majority.
There wasn't a majority.
So with all that said, so I think where y'all are, where you guys are at right now, we talked a little bit about the fact that this ordinance, obviously, there's a couple lawyers and a couple other people that have looked at it, and we've got all these different ideas of what it meant, and it's not extremely clear. Mr. Merkley and I disagree as to whether or not the language provides that someone nominates, more or less, their appointment, and that the language that says that the Board, that you all vote, that you all adopt that means that you, that that is a statement that lacks any substance. Merkley believes that the next two paragraphs are what the reference is of how you, that the Board, the Council adopts, and how they do it is, is make your appointment, and that's, there's no real necessary vote. I think it's confusing. I think that what you can kind of consider doing is this, and I sent you three different options. You can do it with your advisory board, and you don't have this problem about how you propagate your board. You just don't have one. You all just go on your way.
The wastewater sewer board has to approve all the drainage...
The Drainage Board. It would provide that service. Or you can have an ordinance that has a unilateral nomination, only appointed if approved by the majority of the vote of the Council, and a unilateral removal. In other words, this guilt, because you're the President, not because you're the subject matter of this discussion. This guilt could nominate, unilaterally nominate someone, me, and then if you all didn't vote five to four on her nomination, then I would not be on the board.
And we can, we can take them away also, correct?
Well, the other one, there's the unilateral appointment.
Unilateral removal.
Which means you make a unilateral appointment, and then that person can be removed by the appointee with no council involvement at all. In other words, Mr. Zostovny says, I am appointing this person, and I get to remove them, and when I say they're on, they're on. That's one way to do it. So you unilaterally decide who you want to appoint, and you unilaterally can remove them, and you require no board action.
And that's your first option?
Uh...
That's labeled number one.
I didn't label.
Oh, yes. Yes, I believe that's number one. Okay.
So then, you have the idea that you can have a unilateral appointment, that the Board does not have to, the Council doesn't have to approve the appointment, but then the Council can vote to remove your appointment by majority. So you have a unilateral appointment without a ratification of the Council, but the Council can vote to remove your appointment. So that's kind of the same thing as making them approve your appointment when you make that nomination. So it's a different way to do it. But what you get down to is this, folks. You've got to decide whether you're going to let each individual choose someone to appoint to the Drainage Board without a five to four vote, and that that individual gets to remove that person without cause, or you're going to decide that each of you get to nominate an individual, and that that individual nomination, nominee shall not serve without a five to four vote. And then you decide whether you're going to allow the appointing party to remove without cause their own appointee. That's truly just the only, the options that you've got to make.
All right. So, if you can go, sorry.
I was going to speak on this. I don't like doing what-if questions, but the reason I support the fact that the Council would have to approve an appointment and also has the right to remove an appointment is the fact that we are a council. We are not the mayor. It just seems like an executive function when we're all picking our personal appointments, that it's crossing over into more of an executive function in my eyes. That being said, another point that I think should be considered is that if I, if I, the way that, the other proposal where I just get to pick somebody and they get to be on that board without your approval, let's say I pick someone and they go out and commit a crime, and they're representing the city, us as a council have a right, in my opinion, to remove that person from the board, even if I adamantly want to keep him on that board. Same thing as if I wanted to put a criminal on the board and, and had some votes, but I could pick that person, and you guys would have no say-so over that in the city council. There are just no other instances where me as a councilperson has unilateral authority to do anything. We vote as a council. On everything. On everything.
So...
So I would support the one where we can, what I just said.
So an individual nominates, an individual council member nominates, then the council must ratify the nomination, and the council reserves the right to vote to remove without cause.
Okay, so...
That's one, that's, that's an option.
Question.
So that's, okay, go ahead.
Sorry. So the council has the ability to remove with or without cause. Does the appointing member have the authority to remove without, with or without cause?
I did not hear Mr. Maples say that.
I just wanted to make sure.
I think he said...
It would be a vote, right? Yeah, but if somebody came to us and said, I want to remove this member, and we vote on it, I would feel sure that they gave a good reason to remove someone.
Do we currently vote on removing?
No. You have unilateral ability to remove your appointment.
That's how we typically do?
I'm open to suggestions on that.
I just want to clarify.
Yes. I think we should vote on everything from a council.
And then further, what's proposed in front of us lays out that the members that are appointed have to live in certain districts, and I'm not in favor of that.
So, because your original actually talks about that. The, what we're amending talks about them being from, so how do you want that language to be? For the member, to be a member, you must...
Be a resident.
Just be a resident of the city. Eliminate the language that kind of includes the fringe.
Right.
Because under the old, under your original ordinance, you could live in the fringe, and so we're going to have, so one, must be a resident of the city.
I haven't heard their fringe reference in a long time.
Yeah, so this is, this is Roman numeral two.
Okay.
So that's the one, these amendments you made, too. Also, I was going to bring that point up as well, because I don't think it was the will of the council to do that, although I personally think it makes sense to have the members be in the district, because then we have representation for the whole city when we have projects over the whole city. But that's okay. I will give up on that. But on E, it says two council members at large.
Yeah, there's three.
So we change that to three.
Old people live in a different world. I'm old. I live...
So that was the only other change. Otherwise, I support, it's the Roman numeral two, what those changes mean.
Well, I would say that it tends to be agreeable on, for whoever, the appointment should be anybody in the city, because you're, you may not have somebody qualified that you're comfortable with in your district, but there may be, like, for example, with me, I have two people in my district. One works for the Army Corps of Engineer, and the other one works for Waste Management doing just this. They would both be great. So if somebody didn't have any, I don't think they should limit it. But then, and I've talked to Councilman Maples about this, and he makes good, those are good points, but I'm not for picking them and everybody voting on them. Because with the what-if, what if they're, you know... Because with the what-if, what if they're, you know, turn out to be a scumbag, okay? So be it. You're the person that appointed them, you will pay potential electoral price for that. So you should be much more careful on who your appointments are. And if we continue down that road to play what-if games, well, if this board ever becomes split five to four, and there's two camps, what's to prevent the five from just saying, no, 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 and we just have a Drainage Board with five people? I think that's a much more realistic possibility to freeze out a specific council member than a situation where the appointee is, proves himself to be a derelict. So I'm for, and one guy, I'm for, everybody gets their appointment, and you can remove them at your leisure, because if they do do something that disgraces the council or the city, then you should be removing them. And if you don't, you'll be pressured to do so.
Wouldn't you also be pressured if you continued to vote down nominations from another councilperson? I mean, if you had a majority of councilmembers that kept saying no to a council appointment in our meetings, our public meetings, I would think that there would also be some damage to...
Yeah, certainly so, but I don't think the media would cover that like it would if your Drainage Board appointment stabbed somebody, or whatever the offense would be. But, I mean, you're all right, but I just, I just, we created this. The intent was for everybody to have their own appointee, and now we're saying that's not the case anymore, which is fine. But that's the way, I would vote against the council voting and for just having your own and removing your own at your leisure, but it's not the end of the world. The Drain, you know, this isn't, the sun will come up tomorrow, no matter how it goes.
Yeah, because it kind of comes to this dilemma where you have the difference, where the one that I suggest putting forth, I know the, I know with all the meetings that he's attended, I know what he, my main concern is this EPA mandate. That is my main concern. And having somebody that's had 14 years' experience on Drainage Board and has been involved in this since day one, and knows how, now that Drainage Board is now named and included in those negotiations, that to me is just important. So I didn't mean to cause all of this, and I understand why he didn't, and I thought, well, that was solved because he got another appointment, but here we are.
Well, in respect to the actual composition and appointment structure of the Drainage Board, I guess I, we'll go ahead and make a motion. I make a motion that we approve, it's...
What we can.
What?
You can recommend for him to redo it, because they're not complete. My ordinances are not complete.
So I can't pass something on the first and second, and then we make changes?
I think you can tell me, you all can, you can tell me what it is that you want to have the board...
Yes.
Okay, well, then I'll just make some suggestions for the changes that we've just discussed, and if the majority of council wants to move forward with those changes. So those changes would be, and I'm going off of Roman number two, Roman numeral number two, with the elimination of B, which is that each one serves in districts and instead just be residents of the city of Jeffersonville. And then with the change in E, from two councilmembers at large to three councilmembers at large, and then also the inclusion of verbiage, that the appointments can be removed based on the will of the councilmember. So how we currently do all of our other appointments, where just the councilmember can remove them, you don't have to vote on their removal.
So it doesn't include a vote on the appointment?
No, it does. So the two, the second, I'm sorry, the second ordinance that is presented here is the appointment, and then upon a majority vote of the council, they are approved.
So C, so number two, each councilmember's appointment shall be subject to the approval of the majority of the council. The member's appointment shall only become effective upon a majority vote, five members of the council.
Which is basically what we've been doing, just now the verbiage is cleaned up.
And then you want to con...
That's my suggestion.
And include the language, however, councilmember's appointment may be replaced at will by a majority vote of the council. If a majority vote of the council replaces a member of the Board, the councilmember that appointed the Board member replaced by the majority vote of the council shall appoint a replacement member immediately subject to all other provisions of the appointment.
Yeah, I mean, the replacement, the new nominee should be voted on, but we don't have to vote to remove someone.
Got you.
So you want the appointment to serve at the will of the appointing councilmember?
Yes, but the approval of the nomination should be on a majority vote.
So you ratify the approval, you ratify the initial appointment, but you don't have to confirm a removal?
Correct. Which is how we currently operate for all of our nominations.
That's true.
So that's where I'm really going with it.
So that's what, that's your motion?
That's my suggestion for changes, and I feel like maybe a majority of councilmembers are on board with that, or not, but that's just from our discussions, what I've gathered.
So...
I think, I think the reason it seems that we've always operated that way is, we've always said, like tonight, Ron gave the name of his guy. I couldn't tell you his name, I apologize, Ron. I don't care, it's Ron's guy. And I would have put him in tonight, because it's Ron. I want to meet him. But, and I think that's, I've been on here a long time, and that's, that's how he's always done it. If you put somebody up, Kelly, okay, I have no question. And so I've always voted in the affirmative, because you put them up.
Right.
And so we've kind of operated that way, but this may be the first time we've ever had where somebody opposes.
See, I, and I've always did in the affirmative, because it was their appointment, because now, now thinking about what just happened tonight, I would have spoke up on some of the appointments, some concerns that I had on some of the appointments earlier, but...
Well, and I'll just...
The difference is that, in this case, an appointment was removed for what a councilmember felt was cause, and then was subsequently reappointed immediately following, and I just think that's inappropriate.
If you, if you removed your member from the Drainage Board, and then...
For what you felt to be just cause.
And then somebody brought it back the next meeting after their appointment abruptly needs to leave the meeting, would you, would you go in support of that, if you thought he was removed?
No, I probably would have voted against it.
Okay.
I probably would. I mean, if I felt that way. But, but knowing that, the only thing I'm doing is just saying no. I vote against it, because I feel that way, and I'm trying to send a signal to the guy or the gal, whatever. But understanding that probably most likely, they're going to be on there anyway, because it's her appointment.
Well, they tried, and last meeting it failed.
Yeah.
So maybe not most likely.
Yeah. Well, if the whole councilboard on it, it would have passed.
We've been beaten, Esther.
Yeah.
So, and, and I'll just, so again, I want to just continue to say that I support how we currently do our nomination process, because these are two separate things, in my opinion, right? So we're talking about specific nominees now, but then our appointments, and then we're also talking about the structure. I think we should keep the structure the same way we've been doing it. I voted no for Councilperson Gill's appointment, because I think just, I, personally, out of respect for all councilmembers, I think that there could be a compromise and say, maybe my second choice would be a good nominee, and then, you know, just, just because I think that, that is also another avenue. And so, so I know there's a lot of standing our ground on both sides of this, and I think potentially there could be some room in the middle, and so I personally would support an appointment that all councilmembers support. So that's why I voted no in the last meeting. But with that being said, that is separate from the actual way that we should do the appointments. So I guess I just want maybe for Larry to have some direction and say, in the future, when these situations come up, do we want to keep with the same process that we have been doing? So separate from the nomination that is in question.
One of the things that I have observed, and I guess this will be my third time serving on the council, it's hard to find good, qualified people to serve in these positions. And when we're raking an appointment over the coals for whatever reason, then we're going to drive other good, qualified people away from wanting to sit on the boards and things that we have. James Wright, when I went to ask him to serve, was a person that I knew of his background, I knew what he could do, and I knew that he would be a very qualified person to do that. If I have to go out and look for someone else, it would be hard for me to come up right away with another good, qualified person, especially after reading in the news or hearing what's been going on with this council.
I mean, I, I agree that it can be difficult to find qualified candidates for these boards. I think we've also clearly said that we want more citizens to be involved in the process, and I think that there are a lot of people that want to be more involved in what's happening. And if this situation were presented to me, I would pursue looking for another candidate, or at least suggesting another name, knowing that, that I'm not upsetting, if there could be somewhere, some compromise in the middle where I suggest another qualified candidate, then I would look for another qualified candidate and ask for a suggestion.
But I don't think anyone should have the right to tell me who to choose.
In that case, then I'll, then we should completely eliminate the council voting at all, which I mean is another option that's been presented.
I believe we should.
I agree with that. If that's the mentality, then I would say we've been voted, shut down the Drainage Board.
So to move this forward, it sounds like there's two options for next meeting to vote. Is there three? What's the third one?
Give or give it all again.
Is there anybody that's, that mentioned that that's what they want, or that there's...
How do we do that, create a stormwater, what is it called, the stormwater?
Well, we created something else, we'd be the same.
Then we all get a bill.
Stormwater board, yeah.
We all get back to the thing.
There's an actual stormwater board set up by statute.
Statutory stormwater.
To what that actually entails.
You want to report on what the stormwater board is?
Not necessarily the stormwater, but if we disbanded this board, I'd like to know more about what ramifications does that really have for us?
The sewer board, we have to hear all the drainage approvals.
I guess I just...
Don't create a stormwater board to hear them.
I mean, I know that there's, there's two options here, but I'm of the opinion that if, if a majority of councilmembers just want it to be my appointment and in my control entirely, then I don't, we don't have to move forward with having two options. I mean, I would...
I'm just saying that there's two different options.
Yeah, I agree. I just don't want to keep, you know, I don't want to keep drawing it out, so if that's what a majority of councilmembers want to do, I just assumed we wanted to keep operating as we have been. I mean, is that...
Legislative intent would be to do a stormwater board, right?
Well, it's statutorily created.
It's statutorily set up to handle the drainage matters of a municipality.
No, it's partially incorrect. The problem is, the reason we took the Drainage Board as we did, because we have to set up a separate utility, stormwater.
Oh, no.
If you do that, that's fine.
No, no.
We don't have any money. We set up the Drainage Board under, under wastewater, because they launch a waste water. So that's the reason.
If there's to be a board, I would be much more in favor of keeping the Drainage Board, rather than setting up a separate utility. That's not a path I would...
That part wouldn't explain to me.
Basically.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If, if, if the council wishes to have it set up like the original intent, for every board member to have their own, and that they select it, then if Ms. Gill wants to, after it's passed, to keep her appointment, can she do that, because it's the new law? Can she not do that? I'm just curious of where we are after we...
There wouldn't be any action that would be required from the council, so I'd imagine she'd just be able to do that. Is that correct?
I think you're correct.
Look at me being a lawyer tonight.
That's all right. Everybody's been a lawyer. We're giving you the red book when you leave.
My con law classes.
All of this, just so she can make that appointment.
Well, I think we do need clarification in the language here.
So, we're talking future actions, too.
I think, I think we clearly need clarification in, in the ordinance, because...
It needs to be clearer.
That's why I'm trying to...
Because she didn't get her...
No, because there's two different, there's two different interpretations of the same ordinance here.
Yeah, yeah. What does, what does, the, the council shall appoint, and then later on say...
What does number two mean? Jeffersonville Drainage Board shall be composed of nine members appointed by the council.
It seems like me to address Scotty's concerns. We want one way to resolve this, and I understand what you state, is make it, an appointment by the councilmember as a matter of right, but if that councilperson removes that person or doesn't reappoint them, they're not eligible to be reappointed again by another councilmember for...
One year.
One year, whatever time frame you want to make.
Would you all agree to that?
That seems like it solves this, it doesn't solve the immediate issue of this person, but addresses...
I would agree with, I would agree with that if we went down that road. I still like that road, but it...
It turns out your ordinance also at the same time addressed the issue of...
What you've got in hand.
There's be going forward into the future, but right now...
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, these are two separate things. We're talking about, we're talking about future law here, but then it's, and that's not going to solve our issue tonight. I mean, even if we wanted to revisit the nominations after this, this isn't passed, so it doesn't, they're two separate issues, in my opinion.
And so where you're at with the issue of the nomination, Mr. Merkley, who, who was on the council when they adopted this, and he is a lawyer, because he did stay at Holiday Inn Express last night. The Jeffersonville Drainage Board shall be composed of the nine members appointed by the common council of the city of Jeffersonville pursuant to this ordinance as adopted. Mr. Merkley believes that that...
Miss, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we, we did table the appointments, so we really don't need to hash that out again, I probably feel, because we're not going to make an appointment tonight, that's, motion's already been tabled. How do we move forward?
I thought it was tabled after the discussion of this, that was my understanding, but I could be wrong.
You can remove it from the table, and, and we can read to you what it says about that, if you want to deal with it.
I know, I'm not disagreeing, I'm not, I'm not saying that we have to talk about it tonight, but my understanding was when we tabled it, that we were really moving it to further on in the agenda after we had this discussion. So if we...
That would not be by definition tabling.
I just am referring to my personal notes, so I could have wrote the wrong thing down, but that's, that was my understanding. So, I mean, if we're not discussing the nomination at all, then maybe we do just present the two different options, and we vote on that next time.
Well, I still have a nomination to be addressed, because the Drainage Board is going to be short of members if my nomination is not appointed to the Drainage Board, so... And I wanted to know how we proceed. Is it my nomination, or does the City Council have to approve it?
I think we agreed in our last meeting that the council takes a vote, as it sits today, and that's why there was a vote taken. It's why there's been a vote taken every time a board member has been appointed for the foreseeable past.
Unless, who was on the board, or on the council when the first vote was taken?
I was also at the Constitutional Convention, too.
You're older than me.
He's also like, the Rock and Roll Board is certified.
And I can say that I happened to be on the council at that time, when it was created.
And I was, too.
Yeah, there you go, you've got three people that are all in agreement about something, so it's good.
And, and when, when those appointments were made, the appointments was, at that time, turned over to the mayor and the city attorney, and then the mayor and the city attorney basically chose who they wanted on those boards at that time, and if, if the city attorney at that time didn't like it, she did, it did the minutes.
And she did do that.
And she did do that, yes, she did. Matter of fact, that's why, one of the reasons that we have videos of the council now is because I brought my video camera, and I still got a lot of those movies in and videoed the City Council meeting.
I forgot about that, Ron. Were we talking about the Drainage Board?
We're talking about the vote that was taken.
Well, we talked about how we got to this point.
Oh, goodness. So you tell me what y'all want me to do.
I think you bring the options to the council next meeting.
Okay, so...
I will do, I've got your...
A unilateral, a unilateral, and then a majority vote.
Got you.
And I think we, nobody wants to have the constraint of it being in your district, so remove that language.
Correct.
But in the city.
But in the city. And no fringe, no, just in the city.
Okay.
City's big enough, we don't need the fringe anymore.
So in the meanwhile, I'd like to make a motion that my council appointee be allowed to attend the Drainage Board meetings and start working as an appointee.
Are you moving to appoint him?
Mm-hmm. James Wright.
So now we're going under our current ordinance.
Yes, so I'll second.
So, so, so now that we've made, you've made Mr. Merkley and I read this red book, So, Mr. Ellis, you will say you need to ask Ms. Gill, inform her that you rise to move to take from the table the resolution that was tabled for your appointment. Is that what you're doing?
Yes.
I'll second that.
There's a second. Now you get to vote on whether he gets to rise and move to take away from the table. Vote.
All those.
Call the vote.
Madam Chair.
Call the vote.
Vote. I don't even know what I'm doing. I kind of checked out a while ago, so...
Well, Mr. Ellis wants to remove from the table his...
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. His appointment. Thank God, his appointment is appointed. It can move forward.
Nope, not yet.
Now you have to make the appointment.
Make the motion to appoint.
Now, I make a motion to appoint James Wright, or I exercise my authority to appoint James Wright to the drainage board.
And I'll second.
So I got a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
You get that done before he changed his mind.
Now rewrite the ordinance in all those different forms. I'm also going to go to seminar on Robert's Rules of Order.
You have a attorney comment for tonight?
All of the whole year before that I talked about how easy this job was. Take it all back. I moved to rescind.
Well, in the future, if I know about Robert's Rules before a meeting this week, it could have went a whole lot different. So I'm just saying.
Give her the book.
I'm just saying, it could have went a whole lot different. And we have the department heads, which I know he's so patiently been waiting, Mr. McCutchen's, for...
You didn't think you'd be getting a show tonight, did you?
It's all good. Sean Grant was supposed to be here tonight due to an illness. He's not able to make it. The chief is out of town at a conference, so it was not... He wasn't able to be here, so you get me. What I'm here tonight for is, is that the fire department is seeking approval to move forward with a four-year lease purchase agreement for two pickup trucks. There's a budgeted item, so I think that it's roughly around $20,000. That there is no... There are no additional funds needed for us to do this. We would just like to spend the money. We have two quotes, one from Coil Chevrolet, one from John Jones. One from Coil Chevrolet was $36,540. The one from John Jones was $37,323. A $783 difference. Coil was the lowest bidder. That's where we'd like to go with the lease agreement. It'd be a four-year lease agreement on two pickup trucks. We're seeking council approval or your permission to move forward.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I thought we usually buy vehicles like that. Have we leased in the past?
Oh, you know, I'm going to say that way back, it's been both ways. I think that it's...
Do you get to buy it at the end of the one day?
There is, and I think that, you know, there's a benefit... It's my understanding, and I won't speak totally, but it's my understanding that there is a little bit or some benefit. Really doesn't matter one way or the other, but the lease works best at this point for us to pick up two more effectively cost-wise and to move forward. At the end of the four-year program, we obviously get an option for purchase or trade-in and move forward again, so... And is the replace existing pickup? Yeah, we're replacing two. There's a 2012 that's got over... Right around $80,000. And a 2011 that's got between $70,000 and $80,000. One's a two-door that's not efficient for us anymore. They're in the Fire Marshal's Division that uses... They use them on 24-hour daily use. Yes, sir.
You say it's in your budget?
Yes, sir.
So this is a priority that the chief has decided, yeah, I want to spend the money that's in my budget on this?
Yes, sir. The chief did... I did come here and represent tonight with the... He is also seeking this approval and supports it.
And I believe we passed the ordinance that... Or we had a resolution or something where if they're leasing, that they need to come before the council to approve. So that's, I think, the...
Motion to approve the lease.
Got a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries. You may proceed. Thank you. Okay. Now we have... Do we have any other public comments other than the ones that spoke on Spring Street? I guess not. Okay, and then we will move to council comments. Councilperson White.
No comment.
Councilperson Zestani.
No comment.
Councilperson Yon.
Just wanted to mention that the Salary Pay Grade Committee that was established a few meetings ago did meet with Heather and Kim. Dustin and myself were able to attend that. We did start some discussions on some of the concerns that the council had shared with what Liz had proposed. Just asked that if there are any other clarification or concerns that council members want us to discuss or work through, just to let myself or Dustin or Matt know so that we can continue those discussions. Currently, Liz is, I believe, out for most of the month of February, so I think we plan on meeting again early March when she returns so we can get some clarification on some questions that we had. So that's where we left for our first meeting. That's it. Councilperson Maynor.
No comment.
Councilperson Hawkins.
I met with... Well, two of us met together, and I'll let them speak to themselves, with Heather talking about the circuit breakers coming in. And I just want to say, and it may just be luck, for the lack of a better term, but Heather did a very good job of getting close to predicting of what those will be. And if you're not fully fluent on that, that is literally throwing a dart in the dark at a dartboard, and you don't know where the wall is. It's very difficult to gauge. And we are... She did a very good job gauging it. Our numbers are so far, which can change, but so far, right where we need to be. So I wanted to give her kudos and let everybody know we're kind of in the spot we hope to be in. And then the second thing is, we just did the ribbon cutting up in my neck of the woods, at Gottberth Parkway. Very excited about that. It's already... I've already gotten calls from people that live in Stony Brook. It's alleviated some traffic problems with the new traffic light. And that development, the Growlers Brew Pub is going in. Very excited about all that up there. It looks like it's going to be fantastic. And that's it.
All right. Councilperson Owen.
Wanted to thank the city engineer and the city attorney for their work on 17087. Has to do with the right-of-way work. I think that's going to be very helpful in mitigating some damage to our streets that we see from all the people that put their stuff under our streets. Also, just so you're aware, the Parks Authority met prior to this meeting. We approved an agreement with Greater Clark County Schools for the use of Nahin... I'm sorry. John Schnatter Nahin Field House for a potential downtown school. Of course, that's not a definite thing. There's a whole process that the school district has to go through, you know, to ensure that school is going to be built. But should it be built, we have approved an agreement for them to use the Field House as a gymnasium. There's very clear terms on timeframes that each party would use the building. There are very clear terms on who's responsible for what aspects of the building. And I think it will be a fantastic use or additional use of the Field House if that comes to fruition. The Greater Clark County School Board will probably take that agreement up at their meeting tomorrow. Was going to echo the same things that Mr. Hawkins stated about Gottberth Farm Way. Looking forward to seeing Phase One fill in so we can get started on Phase Two. There are several other redevelopment projects ongoing. And then also, lastly, we had a presenter from communities and schools at the end of last year. They kind of talked about what they do for Jeffersonville students with their programming before and after school and during school. They approached us about potentially sponsoring their programming. We did not follow through with that before the end of the year to encumber any $20,000. But I do want to, again, ask for your support in sponsoring communities and schools of Clark County at a $10,000 level. I think that they do some great work for the community, and we should, as a city, be embracing that investment into our students. So I would like... What I would like to do is ask that a claim be put forward for next council meeting to come out of council special projects, which we have $55,000 appropriated in the amount of $10,000 for Clark County communities and schools. I don't want to do that and put it in the claims list if there is not adequate support.
She can't just write a claim. She needs something from community and schools.
Well, yes, right, right.
Is that typically where that funding has come from in the past?
We've never funded it before.
We've not supported communities and schools in the past. This is... Right. We do support other organizations that do work in the community. Sometimes that comes out of special projects. Sometimes it comes out of gaming. We've even thrown some added dollars towards other outside foundations, so I'm flexible on how you'd like to do it. I just thought that the special projects dollars were already appropriated, and we could take that from there. But if there's any opposition to that, I would ask that you please... I do have a comment in my closing about, okay, not-for-profits, so... Okay, I'll address that in a minute. That was all. And I'm sorry to see the funding for Spring Street fail. I think it sends the wrong signal. But hopefully, the commitment that is continually put out that we will have the project complete in phases is not an empty commitment. That's all.
Councilperson Ellis.
Yes, I... My first comment is that I totally support the Spring Street project, but I support it being funded in phases. And as each phase comes along, I'm going to be there to help to provide the funding for that phase. It's kind of hard for me, at this point, to put monies forward on a project that I haven't seen any of the design work yet.
It's in the back of the room, back. The conceptual plates are...
Yeah, the conceptions might be there, but the design has not been done. It hasn't been finished yet. And I would like to see the engineering designs for what I'm going to spend city or taxpayer money for. I think one of the things that us as city council members would be good to learn from some of the things that come from other cities that's been involved in some of these things. And when you stay in your own little city and don't go to the conferences and things that they have in the United States... I went, when I was on the council before, to the National League of Cities Conferences. And I learned a lot more at the National League of Cities Conferences, maybe just sitting in the lobby, talking to someone from another city. I could ask questions, and I talked with people that had been involved with city government for a lot of years. And with some of the things that we seem to be caught up in, maybe somebody else's advice could help us to get over those. Dustin, I know how much you care for the Spring Street project, and I really like your enthusiasm and zeal for getting it done. But at this point, and as I tell everybody else, the council here has committed to do this project. I'm going to continue to be one of those fighting to make sure that it's done.
Councilperson Samuel.
Just a couple things. You mentioned about the not-for-profit requests. Just to go back a little bit, a number of years ago, before I came on the council, there were line items in the budget for, I'd just say giveaway money to not-for-profits. Shortly after I got on the council, I started stopping. It pretty much stopped altogether. And then it's kind of starting back up, which is fine, whatever. I don't think the special project line item, when we did the budget, was necessarily... And I'm not saying you're saying this, that it was, but it was... It is that giveaway line item. That's supposed to be... I mean, that can be for projects. Any of us feel like you're important, either in our district or in the city somewhere, that we need to put some money into or get done that we can't get from... Because you don't have funding somewhere else, because it's a special project that could or should get done. I would hope that we would get our heads together and say, we're willing, if we want... We have $55,000 in special projects, and maybe there's some other pots of money we want to target, which is fine. I would hope that somebody would step up and say, let's identify how much money we want to give away, whatever, if that's what we want to do. And instead of saying, let's give it to the first people that bend my ear in the beginning of the year, that we just put an announcement out there, and we say, we've got X amount of dollars, and we want to hear your proposals from the not-for-profits. You know, we have a not-for-profit right now that Lisa mentioned it, who built the M Fine Building. They may or may not need money, but I'm sure they're thinking, I'm putting all this investment in the city. I may be able to need... I may need some money for a smaller project. I don't know. We have a homeless shelter in town that I'm sure they need all the help they could get. And then I think we could fill this room up with not-for-profits that have great needs, that touch each of us. But I just think it's... If we're going to go back to that, to the giveaway dollars, that we try to be organized where it's fair to us, where, you know, we can truly vote on what we think is the best out of those. And I don't know if we say on the... A certain meeting out of the year, first quarter, second quarter. Maybe we do it two or three times a year. I don't know. But where we just think that through. Because otherwise, what's going to happen is whoever comes the first, in January or February, they're going to get those dollars. And then later in the year, we may or may not have them. So just a thought about that. And some history on the giveaway dollars. Tonight, I believe we voted on... A lot of stuff happened, so my brain's kind of swirling. But I believe we voted on for the first and second reading for the appropriations of $14,000 for training, which I'm for the training that was being offered. It was recommended. At the last meeting, I commented that rather than just going back to our reserves, our money in the bank, let's use our training dollars first, and then later in the year, if we run out, then go back and replenish them. Because if we go to the well first, then we're spending our budget plus that. And just for feedback, the city, we budgeted $100 shy of $193,000 for training across the entire city. So if we got $193,000, there's some, you know, some... A lot of dollars for training. If... I would recommend that our next meeting, that we ask, before we would vote on the final vote on the $14,000, that we ask the controller or the administration to go back and try to get the $14,000 on who's going to go to the training. And then later, we can maybe replenish it if they have a need to go to training. But I just hate to front-load it, and then we're going to spend $193,000 anyway. So I think everybody knows what I'm saying. But the dollar amount is $193,000 training that we've already budgeted, and we're being asked to come up with $14,000 more. And I'm not sure how many people's already gone to trainings. And I'm all for trainings. I just... I think we're putting the cart before the horse on this one. I'd rather do it later. And my last comment that I'd have is, I don't know if it's any accuracy to this or not, but I had an employee come up to me and comment about how they apply for the open firefighter positions. I said, well, I'm not sure. Then I'm sure we have some retirees coming up. And I was... The person said they think there's 14 openings coming up. And the only reason... Only thing I'm thinking about is there's... Somebody's talking about opening a new firehouse. And I would just hope, if that's the case, that we're having discussions among the council. Because if that's the comment, and that's the word on the street, and people are beginning to try to jockey for some of those positions, we have to make sure and determine that we even have the funding for those positions. Because that's... You talk about other costs that'll come up. Those are significant costs. So I actually heard last week that Jeff Fire was getting two new fire stations. And I mean... The things that you hear on the street can't be taken...
I mean, I mean, the things that you hear on the street can't be taken, I mean, I think we would be aware if we were...
I will tell that.
That's why, I didn't say it was fact, that's, I said, I'm asking, and so everybody said no. Everybody said no, that's good, good to know. That's all I have.
You do bring up a valid point in the nonprofits, because I've already been approached by several in the city, so we are going to get to the point to where we got to pick and choose, and everyone's, and, I mean, the Community Kitchen, we've got Exit Zero, we've got the Haven House, that have already been approached for, and, and this is all coming because we contributed money to the, the coalition, the homeless coalition. Pardon? It does not exist, the shelter. Okay. The company. I'm just telling you who I was, was approached by, so I thank you for that information.
I'll just say that I like your, it's almost like you're suggesting they've been like an RFP process, you know, and I would support that, I think, maybe looking at doing that quarterly, and so, a lot, sometimes the nonprofit donations that we make are for tables and events, and, you know, or things like that, tickets, so that way, maybe we can say, you know, this is a three-month period, and that alerts, you know, the nonprofits that have events or fundraisers, things within those three months, maybe we do some sort of RFP process for, they come and submit proposals and what they're requesting, and I would agree with that.
Good discussion. At this point, I'll just take a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Meeting adjourned.